All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen. Call to order, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, me, this June 12th, 2014. I'll ask our county administrator, Mr. Krupp, to take the role.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first item on the agenda, Mr. Krupp, oh, wait a minute, is citizens communication. We have some cards here, I'll call you up in twos. Oh, I thought we had, we're missing one. Well, anyway, it's Les Poole and Susan Hanson.
Good morning, Les Poole, Clackamas County.
Wait a second.
Uh-oh.
I got extra time already.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Three, two, one. As you probably know, I live in Gladstone and spent 20 years in Oak Grove. That's how I got involved with Light Rail and that's how I got involved with the Gladstone Library. I recall almost two years ago when Mariana showed up with that issue and at the time, Commissioner Lininger, hopefully I said her name right, asked, "Are you in the right place?" And it was an interesting question. And obviously, the answer was eventually proven to be yes. And I just want everyone to know that we're getting closer to, hopefully, resolving the library issue in a manner that's gonna work out a little better for Oak Grove. They're gonna, they're still gonna, in my opinion, lose their library, but locating a library that's fiscally affordable in Gladstone, in a place that's accessible and that will help downtown Gladstone, was the original goal that a lot of us in the community had. And you've heard about the $10 million Taj Mahal. That went down in flames and those of us that opposed it, we're vilified. And now we've got a project that's $4 million less. It's better for Oak Grove and it's not gonna be long before there's something that's gonna be firm from Gladstone about what they're gonna build so that November, it's on the ballot because whether it passes or not in November, this needs to be resolved because I know the county's sitting on a lot of money. So let's just stay tuned and watch things closely. This thing's been juggled around for far too long, so ye inherited it. But make sure, I know you will, but make sure you're careful about how you proceed. There's a lot of, lot of bad blood over this. Thank you.
Yes?
Hi. Good morning, Susan Hanson, rural Mulala. A great deal of lip service has been made by this commission about Clackamas County running a distant third to Washington and Multnomah Counties in economic development. Given the ongoing legal and moral fiascos created by Mr. Ludlow and Ms. Smith and the horrific publicity created, it is no wonder our county is floundering. It was a dark day when voters on the basis of glib Tea Party anti-progress slogans and giant campaign signs installed Mr. Ludlow and Ms. Smith. I considered simply copying and reading today the reams of negative online comments that go with the current headlines about the hostile work condition investigation triggered by Mr. Ludlow and Ms. Smith. The vile racist and sexist attitudes displayed by Mr. Ludlow have no place in the 21st century. How can Mr. Ludlow, on one hand, deny his sexist and racist comments and then the other, issue an apology? As to Ms. Smith and her homophobia, there is a long and ugly record of her work in the Oregon Legislature to suppress gay rights. Even uglier was her work as chief petitioner in Mulala to try to stop innocent high school gay straight alliance club. Regarding the land use grand bargain, Ms. Smith went on a junket to the Legislature and gave testimony that was not approved by the BCC. Ms. Smith was attempting, as usual, to advocate for her cronies, the Molidus Brothers, and addressed land use that was not even part of Metro. It's ludicrous that she would then turn around and try to blame her humiliation and failure in Salem on government affairs staff or to claim county lobbyists are too young. These racist sexist and homophobic attitudes and recent attacks on free speech are ineffective in today's society. As moral Americans celebrate diversity and applaud growing equality for our lesbian, gay, transsexual and bisexual fellow citizens, Mr. Ludlow and Ms. Smith seek to take us back to the dark ages of discrimination. Even thoughtful Republicans should wake up and count the growing waste of public funds as the county has to spend our tax dollars defending these gaffes. Why does the public have to foot the bills for all the outside investigations, special lawyers and settlements? I highly admire Mr. Anderson and know after years of interaction that he was courteous, bright and talented. It takes an unbearable climate of disrespect for a worker to risk complaining about discrimination. I wish Mr. Anderson the best. I salute his huge courage for speaking out. Perhaps his personal sacrifice will improve the negative work conditions and serve as a wake-up call to voters. Next election, I hope we can clean house and elect 21st century commissioners who will honor diversity, who won't waste our tax dollars and who will respect hard-working county staff and the rest of our citizens. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I'd like to answer those horrendous and inaccurate claims by a citizen of Clackamas County. You know, talk is cheap. Talk is cheap. There was an investigation and I was found and Mr. Jared Anderson's claims were found to be inaccurate. I will be making a statement at the close of today's meeting to continue this. Thank you.
I find it interesting, Ms. Hanson, who's well-known on Oregon Live as Jay Double Day, Mulala's a mess and other pseudonyms, that she would talk about morals. If you're interested in what Ms. Hanson has to say, please look up those pseudonyms on Oregon Live. You know, I have issued an apology on this. It's on, fully available on the Lamah Week site. I don't think it's on the Oregonian site. I'll not read it into the record here today. If anybody wants a copy of it, they're welcome to give me a call, email me and I'll make sure that they get it. And now, as a possible palate cleanser, we have Eli Crawford. Eli?
Certainly, yeah, if you have it. Just turn it into Mary there, she'll make sure we got, get him.
Welcome. Go right ahead, anytime you want.
Okay.
We'll give a few extra seconds like we did with Les Poole.
Okay. So I have been in 4H in Clackamas County for about the past nine years. I'm also a state ambassador for Oregon 4H. I've been elected twice, which is the max that you can be elected, it's a competitive election, and I represent Clackamas County on the state level. So on the fairgrounds, as you all know, there is the topic of the old barn that has been on its last leg for quite a few years and that because of the snow, just this last winter, has been, I guess, effectively decommissioned under further investigation. That barn may not seem like a lot to fairgoers and onlookers, but when you, if, from my perspective, that barn means a lot. That barn is where I keep my dairy cattle and where kids keep their pigs and their beef cattle. And without that barn and being able to keep their animals there all year, we would have to drive in one day, keep our animals there for a day, show and then go home. And that's, that effectively kind of ruins our fair experience because I also show sheep. So I stay there all week long. I show eight sheep and one dairy heifer among a bunch of other projects and I'm able to stay there the whole week, take in the whole fair experience, you know, get fat on fair food, go see the rodeo, visit with my friends, see the Pioneer Village. You know, all those things make up a great experience, but without that barn there, the kids won't have that same experience and make those memories that I did. And I think that barn has been there since, I've heard, since the 20s. So it's, it's rather old and we've been, even the 4H kids, we've talked about it, oh, that barn is like condemned and it's been there forever. I, I think there, that barn, it needs to be there. It really is a part of the 4H experience and just because it's a barn, I mean, it may not look like much to other people, but it means a lot to us. And a new barn would be awesome or building something as soon as possible because we really need that space for the pigs and the cows and the dairy cattle. And it's just, it's just a space that the kids really need. And I know, just from my experience, it would mean a lot for the future generation to be able to have the same experiences that I did. And if it's just something as simple as a barn, why not do that? And not just something that's like the barn we have now. I mean, obviously, looking at Deschutes County, some huge arena isn't gonna be affordable for the county. But I mean, something simple that's gonna be long-lasting, that will be effective, that we won't have to rebuild, would be really nice. Something with a nice milking parlor for the kids who have dairy cattle and a special area for the pigs, obviously, like we had before. And just basically the same sort of things that we have now, just a little bit nicer that will last longer. That's what our county fairgrounds really need for the kids. That would be a really great experience for them. Thank you.
Eli, it appears you've done other public speaking. Well done, Commissioner Bernard. Hang around there for a second.
So Eli, the commission itself can't afford to build a barn. It's gonna require the community. So I ask you to stay connected to this issue and, and at some point, volunteer to help us raise the money to, to build an effective, efficient money generator that could sustain the fair for decades to come. And we're gonna be reaching out to the community after we decide what we're gonna do and we're gonna need your help and we're gonna need everybody's help to make the building of a new barn a success, so stay tuned.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I do believe that the existing barn should be deconstructed as soon as possible so that temporary things can be set up by county fair for the animals by then to maintain that, being able to keep the animals there all week instead of going in one day.
Do you think it should be on a hard surface that currently exists or on gravel?
Um, I, it needs to be on a hard surface because it's kinda hard to put, put straw and shavings down on gravel. One, it's really hard to clean and two, it's really not comfortable for the animals at all.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Schrader.
What breed of sheep did you show?
I actually, I myself raise St. Croix hair sheep, but I show crossbred market lambs as well.
Yeah, I both raised dorsets and then hampsters.
My, my market lambs this year are part Columbia, part Hampshire.
Okay, yeah, good breeds. And what kind of cows? What's that?
I have Holsteins.
Holsteins, okay. Good job. And I lived in Cambie for over 30 years and the fair was a big part of our family's life. And I will do everything I can to make this a countywide barn raising, one way or the other. I think we could have a real theme here going commissioners that could be positive and upbeat. Also, I don't know if this is doable, I'm also of a proponent if there's any parts of the old barn that can be salvaged.
Absolutely.
I always think that's kind of a really neat idea and I don't know, neighbors used to do this for each other years ago. Wouldn't it be interesting to kinda try a similar, with the fundraising and how we get something built, maybe kinda do it the old-fashioned way? So, thanks Eli.
Eli, just to tell you the history yet on this barn, the only reason this barn's in trouble is because of deferred maintenance. And it's, in this particular case, you've certainly been in there year after year for a period of years and you've seen that deteriorate. We have to address deferred maintenance on all those grounds and other properties we own. But the history of this is that it was brought forward as a problem and all of a sudden, they said it had to come down. Now, the only trade I have, I have an occupation, but the only trade I have is I'm a carpenter. And I will tell you, that's a very unusual gold wing roof situation there. However, I asked for a second look and the commissioners have agreed. Mr. Krupp has today coming in proposals from an architect, or excuse me, an engineer who would say, "If we can salvage it, here's what it will cost." That's a very important number because to replace that, 50,000 square feet, would be over $5 million. And as has already been said, we just don't have that money. We don't foresee it in the future. And I appreciate people's talk about raising money from the public, but it's an uphill battle. I would rather save something that, as you said, was built in the 20s, if it's sound and that has some sound woodwork in there, if we possibly can, for far less money than just tear it down. Because you might know that the tent they have to rent just for the fair is $50,000 a year. That's just one rental of it. And like you say, it takes away your usage for the rest of that year, not just during fairtime of that important structure. And there won't be anytime soon that you'll see a new one if we take this one down, in my opinion.
I think whatever's the most cost-effective that works is probably the best option, honestly.
That's what we think of too. Commissioner Bernard.
Well, I just wanna add that before many of the board members, I've been the liaison to the fair board for six years almost. Before, many of the board members were on the board and prior to the, the folks who run the board, a decision was made to replace the barn and efforts were made to start to raise money. But, so, it wasn't so deferred as it was to move forward with replacement of something that would be more efficient. I'm not trying to convince you because I think I...
It's okay.
But, but, that, that, that money raising really never had the support or the backing of the people who need to be there to raise the money. And after running a campaign and raising money, I have some pretty good connections that I'm gonna reach out to. And I, I think that the mistake is if, if it costs one and a half million dollars to save that building and the annual revenue's $15,000, that's a bad investment. If you can build two buildings and lease each building at the same time, you could increase your revenue substantially. But the square footage revenue for the fair is not enough to sustain that and you can never raise enough to pay the debt. So I look forward to making the decision and moving forward on this and, and I hope that the community will be there to help raise the money to build a barn or two that would sufficiently generate revenue enough to move the fair into the next century.
Just to, for me to wrap this up is every time somebody talks about that it doesn't generate the revenue and perhaps we should increase that, that affects people like you. And I've never expected that a fair operate on revenue, especially those old buildings out there. They have great worth, as you have said. If we were to expect enough revenue to pay for a loan on something bigger, I don't know that people could or would pay it, although there are other people who would like to use the fairgrounds that have nothing to do with animal husbandry or anything else. So I appreciate you coming today. Look at all the discussion you got going with the commissioners. I think you're doing a great job. It's almost like a resume you gave us of your involvement. I think you're doing real well and good luck to you. And if you keep track of the newspaper, you'll find out what our decision will be, probably something next week after we get these bids in hand.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, now, Mr. Krupp.
All righty, the first item we have on the agenda for this morning is a board order proposed for a previously approved land use issue involving the, an amendment to the comprehensive plan map and a zone change. I'm gonna ask Mr. Nathan Boderman from the county council's office to give you a brief report.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel here. And what we're doing this morning is a follow-up to a previous land use hearing to adopt a board order related to a comprehensive plan map amendment in a zone change application for house construction affecting property commonly referred to as 20646 and 20666 South Highway 213. Specifically, this is a board order approving two separate land use applications with conditions of approval and those two applications are a comprehensive plan map amendment to redesignate a portion of the subject property from rural to rural industrial. And we also have a corresponding zone change from the zone RRFF5, which is Rural Residential Farm Forest 5 acre, to rural industrial. These applications are identified as planning files Z0490-13-CP and Z0491-13-Z. Planning staff originally recommended approval of the application with conditions of approval and the planning commission then conducted public hearings, two public hearings, on January 27th, 2014 and February 10th, 2014. By a vote of five to three, the planning commission recommended that the board deny the application. Board of County Commissioners then conducted public hearings on this matter on February 26th, 2014, at which time testimony and evidence was received. On March 12th, 2014, by a vote of three to two, this board voted to approve the application limited to that area identified in Exhibit B, which is a map which I've attached to the board order, which is also included in your materials. At that, at that meeting, the board also decided to impose a new condition of approval effectively limiting the scope of the uses that might be possible on the property in the future to Table 604-1, which has also been included in your materials, but effectively limiting those to construction and maintenance contractors and associated uses. The board then directed staff to prepare the requested amendments to the conditions of approval and draft a board order to finalize the decision and that's what we're here to do today. Staff has amended the draft of the conditions of approval presented at the February 26th and March 12th hearings to reflect the board's decision and direction. The final list of the conditions of approval can be found as Exhibit C to the board order, which again is attached in your materials, as well as in the staff report, which I've provided. In addition to the condition of approval list, staff has provided extensive findings supporting the decision to approve the application. Those have been attached as Exhibit A to the board order. And again, the map showing the extent of the area to which the comprehensive plan and zone change would apply. That's attached as Exhibit B. The order before you today will approve those two applications I just discussed and reflect the amendments to the proposed conditions of approval that I've described and which you've previously approved. I will note that Mike McAllister, Planning Director, is here today. There had been some interest expressed in, in an update on the status of the property, the condition of the property, and so if, if you'd like, Mike can provide that, but before we do that, if it's your desire, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the order, the map, the conditions of approval or the findings.
Commissioners, any clarifying questions? All right, I'll ask for a motion. All right, I'll move. I move we approve the board order for the comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change for Bruce Goldstein Feta LLC as previously approved at the March 12th, 2014 land use hearing.
Second.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? Commissioner Bernard.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no for this and, and actually, I wanna commend staff and the commission for the hard work they did, making this the best possible scenario, as far as I'm concerned. But my issue is that illegal activities on this property went on forever and frankly, I think we're rewarding somebody for doing something that should've been resolved a long time ago and this whole process could've been resolved a long time ago had those violations, code violations been addressed a long time ago. Instead, this went on for years. And so I'm gonna be voting no on this, as I did during the past hearing.
Commissioner Schrader.
I concur with Commissioner Bernard. I was a no vote and I will be consistent with that vote today. Thank you.
Commissioner Savis.
So I do have a question, if Mike could come up. I didn't, wasn't able to reach my switch fast enough when I was asked to have a question. So just wanna make sure everything we discussed that day, the conditions of approval, some of the, what would now be buffers, our concerns were addressed as, there's been no change, everything's consistent with that.
That's correct. So the, so the map that is in Exhibit B includes a very specific delineation of the rural industrial area versus the rural residential area and it includes the buffers, if you will, around, for the most part, the perimeter of the property adjacent to the other adjoining properties. Yes. It also included the limitation on the, on the types of uses related to construction and maintenance activities and I think there was also a recommendation to limit, prohibit building movers in that classification, that's also in there. The other bit of information that may interest you, I think the board was interested in an update. There was some, there was some other code violations that could be taken care of outside of the scope of these land use proceedings and that was the sale of vehicles and recreational vehicles that were out on the frontage of 213. All those have been removed from the property. And there was a little bit of kind of encroachment or creep of the industrial uses on one of the properties that wasn't included in this application. And two weeks or so after the hearing, I did complete a site check, all those, all that sort of encroachment of the vehicles were removed, the property had been graded and seeded, so that was taken care of also.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, the history of this for the public and I appreciate Commissioner Bernard's comments, it was a, it was a great, robust conversation. There have been many situations in this county where there have been people who evidently, according to after really looking at it, whether it's neighbor complaint or staff-driven, really are not operating legally. In many cases, the county's gone forward with help from legislature and actually changed the laws. There's a log home builder that comes to mind that's right now out there on property that officially is not supposed to be doing that and he's gonna have to come to compliance after some legislative tries for a fix. So this code compliance is tough stuff. I appreciated the applicant's attitude in taking to heart the fact that the commissioners all meant that you're not gonna get away with anything in the future and we're gonna be watching you. We've given some confines and it sounds like they're living within those confines and it's gonna come out best for Clackamas County. But I think all the commissioners totally agree with the fact that you've gotten away with some stuff, you know, because of history of the property, et cetera, but now you really have to abide by this particular motion as we pass this ordinance. So a plan amendment, plan amendment change, I apologize. So I appreciate, Mike, yes, oh, Commissioner Savis has another comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to build my, you know, I'll be supporting this. I know we went through a long process on this and I felt that, from listening to all the testimony, that we found solutions for all those concerns with regards to the cars, with regards to access and creating a buffer around the neighboring properties, that this was a means of solving the problems and putting them in compliance and eliminating the code enforcement issues and just making it a cleaner operation. And I think that's what's important, that this is towards a solution. It's on the major highway, there are like commercial slash industrial type activities along that section of the highway, so there's nothing that's really a character, neighborhood character issue. And, and when you drive past this property with the cars removed, it looks like just another property absent the sign, so.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, are we ready? We'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
No.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes three to two. And now, we're going to recess as the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the next item. Mr. Krupp.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Directors for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. This is the discussion item regarding a proposed board order that would approve the withdrawal or merger and formation proposal of a new Parks and Recreation District, and Mr. Gary Barth, our Director of Business and Community Services, and Mr. Chris Story from the County Council's office are here to give you a report on this.
Good morning, commissioners. Chris Story, Assistant County Counsel. This is coming to you as the governing body of NCPRD, because as the process has unfolded, and which has been the subject of multiple study sessions and discussions, and the recommendation of the District Advisory Committee has been to proceed towards the formation of a new ORS 266, independently governed district, and you'll be setting the rate and initiating that process in a consideration of public hearing following this. But before you can do that, you're the governing body of NCPRD, and you have to be asked the question of, do you, as the current district, want to allow a proposal to go forward that could affect your current district? So, this resolution that will be adopted by you as the NCPRD board is intended to affirm your support with the process that the Board of County Commissioners, as the county commission, would be considering in the subsequent public hearing.
Is that your presentation?
That, that is it.
Succinct and wonderful. All right, so the commissioners have any clarifying questions?
I do.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Paul, go ahead.
So, my question for Mr. Story, as I understand it, if a district is in place, formed, and it is within the, the areas or assets within the boundaries of a city decide to withdraw, those assets become part of the city, correct?
Well, the statute isn't quite as crisp as that. It states that when there's a withdrawal for sewer assets, that's certainly true. It's much more specific, but for park districts, it says that the parties will enter into negotiation for a 90-day period to resolve the distribution of assets and debt, and if there's not a resolution, then it would go to arbitration at the circuit court level.
Where's that stated?
That is in the city-oriented statute, I think, believe it's ORS 223. It's not actually subject, part of this conversation, so I don't have the exact reference in front of me.
So, the, so you're saying it only, as far as assets automatically becoming property of the, it only provides to sewer?
The specifics of saying what absolutely is transferred, as far as being local service or regional service, is specific to sewer districts. The, otherwise, there's a great deal of flexibility that's supposed to be the subject of negotiation between the city council and the governing body of the park district.
So, historically in Oregon, even in this region, do you find anything where that was not the case?
I'm not familiar with any city withdrawing from a district.
Just want to express that my experience, we actually had to go to the legislature in Oak Lodge to make sure that the water district assets, for example, not the sewer, but the sewer as well, but specifically the water district and other assets, should Oak Lodge incorporate, wouldn't be confiscated, if you will. It's been an issue with Oak Lodge Water, it was an issue with Clackamas River Water, you know, recently, also, as well as annexations happen, their concern of investment and assets that have been paid off that become, become part of the city, and that's been, at least in my experience since 2001, being elected as special districts, you know, whether that be sewer and others. So, I think that his, in a history sense, that it's, it's, you know, it's been part of the city's role that, but I haven't heard of a negotiation standpoint, and I looked for that, and I spoke to others, but I do, you know, with the assistance of State Representative Dave Hunt at the time, we were able to get some legislation to let those, that area off the hook, should they incorporate.
I'm very familiar with that statute and that bill as it was passing through the House, because there was actually some riders that directly affected some county service districts. That particular provision they were trying to address was, if a city incorporates over existing districts and the district's boundaries would be entirely within that city's boundary, the default position is the districts dissolve, and the city would assume management of those districts. That would not be the case here, because NCPRD is larger than any one city that is one of its constituent members.
Right, and that's, and that's because of, the reason we did that is because of when we looked around, and we looked at in the state of Oregon, that when cities annexed into areas, and there were districts that assets were, so to speak, become, become property of the city, and that was, that was the rationale for doing that. And so, I maintain that it extends beyond sewer districts, you know, and there's history of that. So, that's one of my concerns with this. We had a, a long discussion yesterday. My issue with this, frankly, is that there's 22 years of history and with this district with regards to underserved, severely underserved, identified as severely underserved areas, and I've been trying to seek resolution on this for a long time. That's been my main issue with this, and, you know, yesterday when we had a vote to move this forward with a rate, I, I voted against it, because still 22 years, and my three and a half years as a commissioner, trying to get a resolution to this, seen nothing yet that says that there is a commitment from the district or commitment from my colleagues to see that done. I mean, we talked about it yesterday, so until I, until that's there, I mean, I'm going to have a hard time saying that, that, you know, the next 22 years or the past 22 years, that there's not a solution. This was June 11 last year, there were, we set conditions that, that our support for this would be contingent upon things that address that. I have comments from staff that I wrote down, comments from advisory board members, comments from the commissioners, my colleagues here today, each one of them, conditioning their support for moving forward based on addressing some of those inequities. And, you know, I'm a little, I was a little bit displeased yesterday that it seems to be rushed forward, that we were trying to come up with a rate that would support the district in the future, and yet we don't have a feasibility study, we don't have a pro forma, we do not have a capital improvement list that would solve these problems, and, and some, so there's a lot of unanswered questions. And staff's response, in all fairness, was that we'll get that to you after the fact, or after today, or after tomorrow, tomorrow being today, in that case. So, my apprehension is that it hasn't reached my level of satisfaction for a huge constituency which makes up 80-plus percent of that district, that have not had a fair voice and have their issues addressed. And so, the master plan's still incomplete. Apparently, we haven't even approved the master plan, so they're just, it seems like we're rushing. I think we're rushing too, too quickly, and I'm concerned that the rate might be high enough to, that put this whole thing in jeopardy, and yet, and yet, we're still moving forward, I think, at, for reasons unbeknownst to me, that it seems to be in a rush.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, first, I, my question, I have a number of comments, but one of my questions is the advisory board recommended moving forward on this, correct?
Yes, they voted eight-zero to approve this.
Okay. I, I think that in order to sell the idea to the voters, which will be required, a vote of the people, you have to create a package that supports an invitation for the community to support the plan. And you can't do that until you actually decide to move forward on the creation of a new district. Certainly, the current district could never afford, under the current rate, to do anything. And the fact that Happy Valley, who is the only real community within this district that is controlling, is, continues to grow and create SDC dollars to build parks, doesn't help the rest of the district. And so, at this point, this is a possibility. Additional revenues, a very small increase in the rate could provide an opportunity to resolve this problem. And whether the rate is 89 cents or whatever it is in the end, we had to have a starting point. And I think the vote yesterday was, was just that, a starting point. We don't know at this point whether the community will even consider it. Survey indicates they probably won't, but the more information citizens got, the more likely they were to support a new district. And so, I'm excited to actually get beyond the point of no decision to a point of decision where we can negotiate the package. So, I want to offer my support in working with the community to find out a, a package that they will support and commit to working to get to yes. And so, I, I think that what we did yesterday was, was great. I'm excited, and I'll be a yes on this.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This master plan process, I do believe, is finished. It's been over a year in the making. I think it started even before I came on the commission. It's a product that came out of the NCRPD board, and the board has a special district where people seek to have parks in the county, not to be confused with our county parks. This is the special park districts where people want parks. People who live in this park district have come to us time and time again, will you please fund a park here? Will you please fund a park here? Will you please do this? We've also had, what I feel, a management structure that didn't really work, having the Board of County Commissioners oversee the funding of all parks, because monies were being exchanged from our general fund. The last accounting was $5 million of our general fund has, through the years, seeped into the Parks District. I don't think that's a good way to fund our Parks District. I don't think it's a good use of our general fund. So, what this particular Parks Board wanted is they wanted to have their own governance model. I believe this governance model is one of the few in America, is that right, Mr. Story?
We're the only urban Parks and Recreation District that is a 451 county service district. All the other parks and recreation districts-
In Oregon or the United States?
In Oregon.
In Oregon.
All the others are-
So, that would lead me to believe that our governance model is a bit outdated and archaic. Let the board do that. Let the board who lives in the area talk to their citizens and see if indeed they want to be independent. They have told us they want to be independent, and if they want to pay more, for more parks, this area can pay for more parks. We have been discussing this probably a year and a half. I think there is ample information to move forward on this. I think the Parks Board has been extremely patient with this governing body, sitting here for us to finally make a decision and move forward. Now, the 89 cents is a 35 percent, a 35 cent increase of what is currently being paid. We discussed going a 10% increase, a 10 cent increase, I'm sorry, a 10 cent increase, but that really doesn't buy new parks. 10 cents will not buy a new park. It barely maintains the existing parks. So, we offered up 89 cents based on polling information we had, and we, and it's kind of like the splatter effect. We threw it against the wall, if it sticks, it sticks, if it doesn't, it doesn't. It's going to be up to the people who really desire to have new parks, it's going to be up to the Parks Board to decide if they want to move this forward, and what kind of education can be done for the citizens of their area. Now, philosophically, I think this is a good idea, because it decentralizes control of a very small entity, and I think that we have unincorporated entities in the county who seek their own governance model. We have heard that time and time again. So, it goes with my philosophy of letting the people have a say and let the people control what they want. So, I'm sure it won't look like this. This model may look different in a, in a month or so after we do our education and awareness, as we get more ideas in, and we know we're certainly all open to that, so that's why I'm a vote, yes vote on this.
Commissioner Schrader?
I just wanted to ask a process question. I supported this yesterday. My understanding is that there is going to be a continued conversation in, in terms of, we're, we're moving ahead with this, but tell, let's, for the public record, talk about the process of where further conversations are going to happen, this story.
Absolutely, happy to share about that, and I will note, this is just the first of two discussions that you'll be having today, and the formal process that will start subsequent to this, but when you're not sitting as the NCPRD board, as, but as the Board of County Commissioners, is the process that will have the continuing discussions. If you decide to go forward today after the public hearing, we have reserved time on July 17 and August 7 to hold subsequent public hearings to have a discussion regarding whether or not this is an appropriate proposal to go forward. There are some statutory criteria regarding factors that you would be considering, and then we would be making a recommendation of whether or not to go forward to a ballot that you would make in August.
So, this is not the final, I guess, the point I'm trying to make. This is, this is moving forward, it's still exploratory, but the public is going to have at least two or more opportunities to weigh in-
That's absolutely correct.
-on the idea. I have mixed, I've been direct about this, I have somewhat mixed feelings, because I've seen the successes of the Parks District under the umbrella of the commission. We have now some softball parks and, and, which include, you know, the infrastructure for active recreation, as well as some natural areas, both in the Milwaukee area, the Happy Valley area. These are kind of regional facilities where you can really have, I don't know, I had kids that played softball, so it was important to have those kinds of facilities that attract everybody from all over the area. So, there, we were really pretty successful with that, which, and it was, it was actually kind of a chore, I remember, with public input to get one of those ballparks, particularly one in Milwaukee, kind of built and pulled together, and it's a beautiful facility What I do worry about, and where I agree with, with Commissioner Savas, and I think my colleagues, I think we do as well, is that we do know that there seem to be underserved areas, and if we move forward with this, with this, and this gets placed on the ballot, I'm afraid that unless there is a discussion of what that will mean for those underserved areas, we, you know, whether or not it will actually be, you know, we'd have a yes vote by the folks. So, as we move forward, I just want to, I want to continue to have conversations about how we can equitably, even if we divest ourselves of the governance model, how can we just equitably make sure that, that folks who, who are, who haven't been getting a similar level of service, how we can help and work for them? So, that's, I might, I will be a yes vote today, with the understanding there'll be continued conversations.
Commissioner Savas?
So, I just want to, you know, common sense would suggest if you understand all of this, and, you know, I live in the district, I'm the only person who sits up here who lives in the district. I, I have the title anyhow of being the liaison to the district, so I would, I would somewhat assume that if my colleagues were the liaison to some kind of a committee or, or area, that I would, I would put some value and stock in that. And it would, I would also assume that as the, and we are sitting here as the board of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, and I think I made the suggestion many times in the last year or so, that please go look at the master plan, the present one, that's been approved back years ago, the current one. Remember what everyone at these community meetings said, remember what the community said at our town hall in Oak Lodge, Jennings Lodge, when those folks appeared. They've already said, they, they've, they've had their say, over and over, the same message, the same message is, we're underserved, we don't have parks, we don't have parks, it's documented, we don't have parks. And so, with regard to Commissioner Smith's comment about people have a say, all I'm saying is put it on the ballot, that they'll get what they've said, but if it's not a choice, they were not going to have a say. And that's the only way they're going to get a say, is to include language that guarantees those underserved areas that have been documented for years. I even brought in newspaper articles of past issues where this is, and it's one simple request, and I will stand firm, and to, and I will, I will- And, uh, I will stand firm, um, and, uh, to, and I will, I, I will continue to advocate, uh, on behalf of those eighty thousand people of a hundred and sixteen, hundred and fifteen thousand person district, you know, for what they have been crying for, for a long time. And that's not yet, that's still yet to happen. I'm baffled by that.
Commissioner Bernard.
Well, I think that we do have common sense. And we know that this bill, or this proposal would not pass unless there were parts of this package that addressed that issue. It also makes common sense to me that a million dol, millions of dollars invested in a trolley trail be recognized as actually a linear park. It doesn't seem to be. I mean, it's disregarded as a park. And it was a, uh, something that that community supported very, very much. And even though we were called devils at the dedication, um, it is a project that was highly supported, um, by the community. I also served on the Master Planning Committee last time as Mayor of Milwaukee. Uh, and, and we, the, one of the issues that has occurred over time is that you, at one point, people like this kind of park. At one point, people like this kind of park. And it keeps kind of the, the, uh, the dynamic or the, uh, continues to change. And you have to change with how that, how that, uh, the community's thoughts are. But I know with absolute common sense that this measure would not pass without a package of deals that would address the shortfalls that that community feels has occurred. Otherwise, we'd be wasting our time. And I don't plan on wasting our time. And also, at the current rate, you could never do any of those things unless the community would prefer to have their homes bulldozed and density increased to increase the SDC revenue and capital to build those parks. I don't think they want to do that. I hear them say, I want my community to remain the community it is. And, uh, the only way, the only way you can increase SDCs is development. And I've been in this community my entire life. And I don't see a lot of empty space. And again, unless you do in a, like the report did in Portland last night, where one house is torn down and two are built. That could occur if that's what the community wants. I'll be there to support them on that. But I don't think that's what they want. So, uh, the only solution is a higher rate, a different, and a package the community supports, and that makes common sense.
Um, before I recognize Commissioner Savis for his third time at bat on this, I'd, I'd like to say that I'd have a few words to say about it, I guess, at the end. And secondarily, this is a chance for the public to, um, to jime in. And third, this is our next agenda item as well, ladies and gentlemen. So, uh, Mr. Savis.
Well, I was looking for the relevance of part of your, um, statements there, Commissioner Bernard. But I just want to remind, remind you that, and I don't know, again, I'm trying to understand the relevance of the trolley trail. But frankly, um, that was something that was brought forth by the community, advocated for it. And had they not, there wouldn't not be a, a trolley trail. But the trolley trail is not something you're going to put a picnic bench on. It's not something you're going to throw a football or a baseball or play with your kids on. It's a linear trail. And substantially, that that group of folks advocated for the dollars, it did not substantial amount, a huge proportion of those dollars did not come from the NCPRD district.
Mr. Barth. Has this not been a two-year process?
Uh, we initiated the master plan update process in the spring of 2012.
And, um, in addition to that, you know, we talk about equity and parity and fairness. And, um, you know, this, this proposed increase from fifty-four cents to eighty-nine cents, that in addition to SDCs, which are a little bit nebulous, who knows how much you get on those kind of things projected wise. But this additional money at least proposed would also allow for some capital construction. Is that true?
Correct.
And, um, and we, you know, one of the things that I will tell everybody that yesterday, it was a three to two vote to start this process. And I voted no. But I understand where my problem is and was and still is today is that I'm not so sure eighty-nine cents is sellable. Certainly, I agree with, and Commissioner Smith started the conversation about, uh, giving independence to that district. It was supported by the city of Milwaukee. And actually, one legislator, two sessions ago, put a bill in to say, you know, we want to be separate. We took that very seriously up here and said, you know, that sounds good. Uh, the question is, you know, do we give them a dime? Or do we give them what's been proposed? And there was another proposal that actually was more than this one. So, you know, I, I want to mention also, Commissioner Savis is the liaison to the District Advisory Board. But we must remember the District Advisory Board voted eight zero to go forward with this. So, um, you know, we, we have to respect our boards as well here. The, uh, the other thing is that I will, we, we will continue the conversation based on the polls that happened yesterday, but continue the conversation about how much to go out for. And I believe there should be another poll. Specifically, now that we know what the dollar amount is, eighty-nine cents. And should that hold during the next several weeks' process? Um, then I believe that one more poll needs to be done. Now we know specifics and we can tell them a little bit more about those specifics. So I'll probably be, by the way, supporting this today when we eventually get to the hearing. Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Savis.
So I just want to remind that the same NCPRD Board also voted to acquire property to build the park. And they're in support of that. So that's, I'm still struggling to understand what is so hard with including language that guarantees that the underserved communities will be served.
All we got to do is find that money. That's rather elusive. Commissioner Smith.
I was just going to mention the money. I was just going to mention the money. The Park Board mayor voted to buy a park. It shows their dedication to continue with the park service. But then it's up to us to fund it. We don't have money to fund what they want to do. So therefore, if they have ideas on how they want to raise money, if they have ideas on how, where, when they want to do a park, let's let them do it. I think the, I think, uh, you know, what we're overlooking here is, some folks are kind of down in the weeds saying, we need the plan and we need this selection, uh, this site selected, or we need this. And, um, oh, we need to serve, you know, the underserved area. Well, I think that's a decision for the Park Board to make. And I said before in the study session, it's almost dishonest for this BCC to go and pass a measure telling an independent board what they're going to fund and what they're going to not. I think what they would need to fund, I think we need to pass this with giving them much freedom as independence as possible. And they can make the decision. As far as the eighty-nine cents, it's an idea. I don't know if it's going to stick on the wall. But I think there's been some things said here by commissioners that maybe aren't true, that we're losing sight of what we're really trying to accomplish here. And that's an independent board that is self-sufficient, that does not rely on general fund taxpayer dollars, where we could be using frankly, those dollars to pave roads or, mm, something really important, our juvenile services. So I think this is very good money management and this board, uh, would be remiss not to move forward.
Commissioner Savis.
I appreciate you explaining your rationale, Commissioner Smith. But that's not the rationale that's been, that's been expressed by the constituency out there that I've heard for, um, the last, uh, twenty-two years of the existence of that district. Mr. Krupp, yesterday, uh, you shared with me, um, that, um, that eighty-nine cents, because Commissioner Smith doesn't, um, maybe she didn't catch this. But at eighty-nine cents, there is, what, you mentioned three and a half million dollars potentially that could actually build the park, right? So the monies would be there in the eighty-nine cents that she proposed, right?
My understanding is, is that the additional, uh, revenue raised with an eighty-nine cent, excuse me, excuse me, eighty-nine cents, uh, would raise, uh, three and a half million dollars in addition to what we're currently bringing in today.
Right. So, so voila, there is the funds to build the parks. All I'm saying is include the language to serve the underserved areas and we're good.
We will discuss that, I think, ad nauseam. Mr. Barth.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add too that the master plan, we're still, um, for the public, they can still go onto our website, ncprd.com. And there's a virtual open house. Staff has produced a fantastic, uh, document that allows folks to weigh in on the, um, uh, plan as it's being dedicated. Commissioner Savis is exactly right that we still have underserved areas within the district. Uh, when we formed this district in nineteen ninety, we formed it at fifty-four cents a thousand. Actually, it wasn't even a defined rate until the property tax limitation. But we formed it at a stated amount and we had a twelve million dollar revenue bond to build out assets that did not exist. We started the district with ten parks. And today, we now have twenty-five parks, thirty-eight, or thirty-eight parks, excuse me, thirty-eight parks, twenty-five natural areas, fifteen miles of trail, uh, including the six-mile trolley trail. And those parks all need to be maintained and asked. But we've never had a capital bond except that upon formation of the district. All the other capital investments have come from grants, matches, uh, donations from the county general fund and system development charges in the high-growth areas. But, um, we still have gaps in service. We still have underserved areas, including South Gate, Oatfield, and the Oak Grove Jennings Lodge area that are still targeted for park assets. The, the master plan update in two thousand and four identified those as underserved areas. And the recommendation was to create a special district at a higher rate and a general obligation bond to be the solution. And the plan was adopted, but not the funding mechanism. So it's not overly surprising that we still have underserved areas today. The findings from this master plan update was we have underserved areas and the solution is a higher permanent rate and probably some kind of a capital bond in the future as the means and mechanism to continue to fulfill the needs of, of the citizens with the service areas. And that is all outlined in, uh, in the master plan document on the website.
Um, you know, one of the things that my predecessor, Charlotte Leanne, said is that really, Oak Grove should incorporate. One of the problems is, ladies and gentlemen, uh, Oak Grove is a very dense area. It expects urban services when they're unincorporated. And the county does not have the revenues that cities get. And, uh, whether it's library, whether it's parks, you know, we've got to recognize that, that, again, it is a very dense area with a lot of needs, let alone road needs as well, which we've been demonstrating in some of the proposals in the last year. But we cannot continue high-level urban services in an unincorporated area because we just don't have the revenue. And as we do that and spend our, our revenue more there than other places, it creates a bit of a imbalance, I think. Now, listen, we are actually ready for the public to say a few words and we have one public. His name is Les Poole.
One public.
Public.
Hello again, Les Poole. I lived pretty close to the trolley trail. And as you all know, I fought pretty hard to keep light rail off of it. And ironically, when I legally challenged the usage, we heard that it wasn't really a park. Trimest legal defense was it wasn't a park. Obviously, it's a park. What I'm hearing today is that there are several issues the Parks District face, faces right now. And they're the same issues we face in just about every bureau, just about every jurisdiction. Cost of business is going up, maintenance is deferred, uh, the economy's tight out there. We're in a situation where we need to raise tax rates. Whether it's for the library operation, whether it's the Park District, that's, that's the reality. But I think what's getting muddled here is the need to increase the tax rate, something that you probably would like to avoid and something that if a vote was required, might be a tough sell. That exists and it's in a master plan from what I understand. Well, the master plan versus how the Parks District is governed are two different issues. And it seems to me we're combining the issue of the master plan, the economic reality, and it's getting all muddled into, well, we're also going to change governments, govern, how it's governed. And I'm not here to support or really debate so much the issue of governance, but just to make a general comment. Commissioner Savis has a concern that is so, so common. And that is certain areas that have more ambiance, that have more influence, that generally have a better ability to somehow generate money, somehow get attention and get investment in their neighborhood. That's been, that's been something we've seen in the past. While the other areas, be it Jennings Lodge, tend to fall by the wayside. I'm not trying to get too far into the weeds, but there's a story here. There's a reason why Jennings Lodge is underserved with sidewalks, why Jennings Lodge is underserved with parks. And what I'm trying to say is that we need to raise the tax rate. There probably isn't one person in a thousand in the county that knows that that's something that's coming down the road. And until this master plan is complete and we know what the tax rate would be, I think you're, you got the cart a little bit in front of the horse. And, and the governance aspect should be delayed for a short time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the board order for the merger and formation proposal of forming a new park and recreation district under ORS two nine, two six six.
I second that motion.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion?
Yes. So, uh, Mr. Poole's comments about the cart and horse came up yesterday, as a matter of fact. And, um, good observation, Mr. Poole. That's, uh, exactly what I said yesterday for the exact very reasons. This is like going on a picnic, loading up the car and leaving the picnic basket in the garage.
Call Yogi Bear.
The incentive, pardon me, I think I have the floor.
Oh, she's just, go ahead.
Just kidding.
Go ahead, Mr. Savis.
The incentive is what I'm asking to be included. And I see that's not going to happen. So until it is, I can't support this.
Commissioner Bernard.
The, the problem is the law requires us to do it a certain way. And so we're kind of stuck. And you're right. But that's the law. And so in order to start the new group, we have to set a figure. Uh, and that's what we're doing. That's all we're doing. And, you know, I think you're right about another, a couple of other things. And seldom do I agree with you. But, uh, but, but you're right that, uh, you know, uh, I sort of agree with you in that Happy Valley, which is growing, produces SDCs and greater opportunity for Happy Valley. It's a fact. Oak Grove, which has been grown out exactly like Milwaukee, doesn't have those SDCs and doesn't have the ability to put sidewalks in and build parks because they're pretty much grown out. So the alternative is, uh, you know, creation of a city, a greater tax revenue is one. And Paul and I both supported that at one point. And actually, I contributed to that, uh, campaign. The other is to, to, uh, down, uh, allow for greater density, which I, I also agree the community doesn't want. So there aren't a whole lot of options left. And I think that this, there's nothing in what we're about to agree to that does not include the opportunity to create a package. We have to create it first and then negotiate the package. Otherwise, what are we doing? I mean, we don't have enough. This, that's the only way to do it, by law. And, uh, time is, is important. Getting this done as soon as possible and having the opportunity to say, hey, if we do this at eighty-nine cents and you get this, will you support it? And that's all we're doing. If they say no, then we won't put it on the ballot. If they say yes, and I'm willing to work on that, then we'll put it on the ballot. And, uh, I think we need to spend a little time and then do a survey, maybe a month or two down the road after we, we get that package together. And I believe the master plan has specific projects that we could pull out and say, if you support this, we'll give you this.
If I could clarify, the master pan, plan is a ten-year kind of strategic guiding document. So it talks about level of service, uh, that does analysis, shows where the underserved areas. Then it doesn't prescribe the separate capital improvement plan then, is the document that gets produced to address the issues identified in the master-
But it does identify some-
But it does identify.
And if you priced it, put a price to it.
Over a hundred million dollars worth of projects identified.
It's aspirational, right? Say, if you support this in the next five years or ten years, we'll do this.
Correct.
It's an aspirational plan. Yes. Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
So I just want to, I just want the public out there to think, Commissioner Bernard, all due respect, I don't want the, the public out there to think that somehow it's illegal or it's a procedural thing, that we cannot commit, that we will, um, put this measure out there and include language that addresses the needs that I've been speaking to, which is this, the- is the underserved, unmet needs, severely underserved. There's no law. There's no procedural thing. Granted, there are procedures, but there's, so my motion yesterday was just this, bring back a package that reflects the needs of the underserved communities. There's nothing illegal or inconsistent with the procedure to get us there. It's just a commitment that I'm asking to hear from my colleagues that is consistent with everything that's been said, simply that. I just don't want anyone to misbelieve or somehow believe that procedurally it's against the law to include that, or as a commitment.
Ladies and gentlemen, it has been indicated to us, just for the record, that unless we start the process now, specifically today, it will not be on the November ballot. That is law. Commissioner Smith?
You know, we have some park board members in here, and they've been silent. I wonder why that is. But I will say this, oh, you do have a blue card, thank you. This is, until we hear from, our park board needs to come out and say something and be in support of this and sell it to your community if you want this to go. So later on in the other public hearing, I guess, I'd like to know the opinions of those folks who have taken a lot of volunteer time out to make sure that they're well represented. Gary?
If I could, I've heard from at least half a dozen current board and former board that would have been here today but were conflicts prohibited them from getting here.
Mr. Krupp?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I understand that we do have a motion on the floor, but I wonder if I might suggest something that, it's not necessarily intended to motivate Commissioner Savis to vote for the motion, but maybe provides some sense of direction and assurance on the part of those commissioners who are planning on voting for the motion with respect to intent as we move forward with this process. And let me suggest, and I'll need to have county council listen to this very carefully as I word it to make sure that it's a suggestion that cuts the mustard here. But on the proposed board order, in the paragraph that precedes the therefore statement, where it says, "It further appearing that this petition for formation of the new district is consistent with NCPRD's master plan recommendations and the district advisory board's recommendations, and reflects an opportunity to deliver improved parks and recreation services to its residents." Would it be appropriate if we simply inserted some additional language that implied an intent here that said to deliver improved parks and recreation services to all its residents in a balanced and equitable manner, including both growing and underserved areas?
There would be no legal problem with that.
I would be willing to amend my motion.
Well, Commissioner Krupp, that was well said.
I'll second the amendment.
It's all we were looking for, is some recommendation.
All right, now.
But Mr. Savis, will you vote yes on it if we amend the motion?
Mr. Krupp just repeated what I've been saying for the last year.
But will you vote yes?
Yes, if that's included.
I want to fully understand the ramifications of what you said. I believe that Mr. Barth and the DAB have worked on equity for a long period of time. And the master plan itself actually shows growth of parks area in the, well, let's call it the area from Oak Grove to Jennings Lodge, is that correct? Does it show more parks in the future in that area?
Yes, it shows that a number, several parks in the Oatfield area and at least one more neighborhood park in the Jennings Lodge-Oak Grove area.
Okay, so that's consistent with, again, the testimony, the public input, the work that you've done, and at least the people who did the work believe that that is parity, and that is helping to serve the an-underserved area. My emphasis is an, because there's others too. So right now, at least as crafted over two years by the public, by staff, by input, there is a better park situation for the underserved, is that right?
Correct. It's planned, just not funded.
Well, that's a key to everything, is it not? And so what Mr. Krupp suggested really is redundant in a way, because you will provide better park services in the underserved area. Again, I repeat that, is that true?
Subject to available funding.
I know, yeah. So my concern is, is that it is repetitive. It's something they've already done and taken into consideration. If by this added language, it would mean that we have to look for more opportunities in all underserved areas, then it's a question of funding. And it certainly is a question of, do we honor the process that we spent two years getting to, or are we tweaking it at the last minute, trying to make it seem, subject to funding, that we're going to put even more than what we've already got recommended in the master plan in capital improvements in the underserved areas? That's what concerns me. And there's a motion, and two motions on the floor. I'll recognize Commissioner Bernard first.
Well, I, the master plan addresses the shortfall already, and there may be some tweaks in the master plan that might address other community opinions or satisfy other community concerns that would occur anyway. And so I don't know that it matters, that it just repeats what's already said. And I think it is. It just repeats what's already said. It doesn't say, well, we will specifically identify Oak Lodge, Jennings Lodge in this motion and address their problems. It just says that we're going to take a look at the district and try to satisfy all those needs, should we have the funds to do that. That's all it really says.
Commissioner Savis?
Just want to just clarify that some of the underserved areas are not just in Oak Lodge or Jennings Lodge, they're in Milwaukee. And so this is not just about Oak Lodge, it's about 80,000 people, 33,000 of those 80,000 live in Oak Lodge. There's also the other, whatever the delta is, 50,000 people approximately, that are underserved. So with regard to the master plan and Commissioner Ludlow's statements, I just want to clarify that the current master plan that was approved, what, was it 2004? Correct. Yeah. Didn't result in anything as far as that underserved area. So just because it's in the master plan, there's lots of master plans out there, and the projects in there and the findings in there, there's no guarantee they're fulfilled. Mr. Krupp's suggestion gets us there, which is, reflects my motivations and suggestions that I've been making, and that is documenting it throughout this process.
Commissioner Schrader?
It's not redundant.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I'm okay with adding that language. And should we just call the question?
Yep, I think so.
Well, ask one question of staff, specifically, and then I'll be ready to vote. On the amendment currently. Mr. Story, what's the net effect of this amendment?
This is a consent by the NCPRD board to a process that the Board of County Commissioners will be initiating. So it is in the form of a recommendation, in essence, or a consent. It's not binding on the Board of County Commissioners and/or the language that would be sent to the ballot about what would happen. The language that would be sent to the ballot would be developed and discussed for your August 7 meeting, after there's been additional public input and vetting process. If you did include something in the election materials, I think that would have a more restrictive effect on the proposed district.
So just for the record, so that everybody will know what we're voting on, this is the amendment, again, to the first and main motion. So Mr. Krupp, would you mind reading that into the record one last time?
So you need me to state the full motion? Oh, boy.
Oh, do you?
I think you did. Plus the addition, so to move that you would approve the board order for the merger and formation.
You can't do that until we approve the amendment. I appreciate what you're saying, Mary. But you can't, you don't read the main one because we're not voting on the main one, we're voting on the amendment. Then when you do the final one, you read the whole one plus the amendment we're about to approve. I believe that's true. Mr. Story?
I think we amended it before.
We have not voted on the amendment.
So the, as I understand, the consideration here is, this would be a motion to amend the proposed board order.
Correct.
To include additional language in what would be the second to the last paragraph, so that it would read as follows, that if, "Further appearing that this petition for formation of the new district is consistent with NCPRD's master plan recommendations and the district advisory board's recommendations, and reflects an opportunity to deliver improved parks and recreation services to all its residents in a balanced and equitable manner, including both growing and underserved areas."
All right. He's read it into the record, we're voting on the amendment only. I'll ask the clerk to take the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader? Aye. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. Are we ready for the question? So the motion was made and has now been amended. So I move. I think there's a motion on the, remember, that was a sub-motion. We had the motion on the floor to pass this. I think you have. Since then, we went to an amendment, voted on the amendment, and now the main motion should be voted on, Mr. Story.
That motion is still on the floor.
I still think that you have to, in the statement, as amended, use the word "as amended."
It is automatically as amended because we voted for the amendment, Mr. Story. So anyway, now, we will vote on the motion as amended previously. Mary?
Commissioner Schrader? Aye. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith? Aye. Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. And now, we're going to talk about the NCPRD one more time. I'm going to adjourn the meeting as a Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and reconvene as the County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Krupp?
Yes, this is a public hearing to consider a board order for a public hearing to initiate the formation of an ORS 266 Parks and Recreation Service District and merge with or remove territory from North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. And I'll ask Mr. Gary Barth and Mr. Chris Story again to provide a short report to the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. I have to note, I apologize if I cover some of the same territory twice, the two overlap significantly. I'll note, the process that you're dealing with today, you're sitting as the Board of County Commissioners, and you are considering the initiation of a formation proposal, which would have two subsequent hearings, one on July 17, one on August 7, in which you would receive public input and consideration regarding the idea of referring out to voters, the question of formation of the new district. If a new district is formed, the current NCPRD, North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, would merge into a new district with identical boundaries. The net effect of that would be an increase in the permanent rate of NCPRD and a changing governance of NCPRD from being governed by the Board of County Commissioners to being an independently elected board. The process of raising a new permanent tax rate is somewhat complex for special districts because the direction and advice from the Department of Justice is that you cannot just by vote raise the rate, you have to form a new district to raise a rate, which is why we're considering this today, and also gave rise to discussion regarding governance. And if you are proposing formation of a district, the statutory required process is that you must pick a number at this hearing today, which is subsequent to the conversation you had yesterday to arrive at 89 cents. The boundaries are fairly locked in at this point, but the number is subject to modification at the July 17 hearing and certainly open to additional public testimony. Part of the formation process is that you have to receive the consent of cities that have territory within the proposed boundaries. So after our previous study sessions in both March and May, staff made presentations and had discussions with city staff and the city councils of the city of Milwaukee, Damascus, and Happy Valley. At the time of the submission of the staff report, the city of Damascus and Happy Valley had not yet had the opportunity to vote on the question. So you will see that there's two different scenarios that were under consideration. They have subsequently both agreed to allow the territory within their cities to be within the boundaries of the proposal. So we are on a more simpler path where the boundaries are identical. The consents have been subsequently distributed to you as we've received them, as has an updated economic feasibility report, excuse me, that would elucidate what the rate was. Staff's recommendation for an initial rate was 64 cents, so the initial distribution of the economic feasibility report showed that a new district would be feasible at that rate. And we are in the process of revising that economic feasibility report to reflect the proposed 89 cents rate that was discussed yesterday, and we'll get that out as soon as possible, although I will simply note frankly that if it was feasible at 64 cents, it's very likely feasible at a higher rate. So given that, the decision before the board today is whether or not to initiate the formation process.
Thank you. Clarifying questions, commissioners? If not, we're going to.
Actually, Chair, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Savis.
And that is, so, Mr. Story, as I'm trying to craft a supplement motion for later in the meeting, the language that would be included in the ballot description, is that the correct verbiage, ballot description, where the 175 words is called? The ballot title, perhaps you mean. We have a ballot caption, the question, the ballot title, and then an explanatory statement.
And the 175 words are encompassed in, the majority of those 175 words encompassed in the?
The ballot summary.
The ballot summary. Thank you.
I will note that the board would not take action on election or ballot language until the August 7 meeting.
Right, and that's, my motion is very, actually very deliberate in the sense that in preparation of that, it's going to take time to put that together, so that's what my motion will try to do, which I tried to do yesterday, was get that underway so that we're ready to include that.
All right, we're going to open the public hearing, and we will have Mr. Bill Bersy come up.
My name is Bill Bersy. I am the.
Can you put that closer to you, Bill?
Sure. This? It does move, okay. All right, yep, thank you. My name is Bill Bersy. I am presently the chair of the district advisory board, and we've been involved with staff over the last couple of years with the master plan. And to supporting staff, they've done a great job of getting this to you over the past few months, and the board has worked very hard with staff. And as you noted, that the board had voted 8 to 0 to approve the master plan and to move this forward. And I'm here today in regard to the board to ask you to continue that and to move this process forward. I have to agree with Paul and with Jim, I know it's a hard decision to make. My past history has been in the Parks and Recreation field, and I'm glad I'm sitting here and not with Gary here over on that end, because for 35 years, I've sat on where Gary has, and to deal with politicians and everything and trying to get things passed and to make it better for the citizens of the community to have better parks and recreation. And I would like to see this move forward. Personally, I don't think 10 cents is enough, whether or not going up to, is it 89 cents? Is that what it is? It's hard to see, one way or the other, but we do need to make a decision to increase the fee and to better the areas for the kids and the adults and for the senior citizens in the district. I think it's a great district. I worked in California, I worked my last position in Fairfax County with the McLean Community Center area, and some of those areas have lots of money, and it's pretty easy for them to do a lot of things. Here, we've got to work much harder to get things done with parks and recreation. So I'm here with, as part of the board, to support this and ask you, as the Board of Commissioners, to move this forward.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of the commissioners.
I move we approve the board order to initiate the formation of an ORS 266 Parks and Recreation Service District and merge with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Bernard?
So I assume that the motion we made to amend the ordinance follow.
So, I assume that the motion we made to amend the ordinance follow... Goes immediately into this, and now we're voting as the board to support what the other... As the Commission Board to support what the Parks District Board.
Oddly, I would...
Procedure.
Oddly?
Right, I would have to say oddly, the position is actually reversed, in that the NCPRD Board had to endorse or agree with what you, as the county commission, would now be doing for the process to go forward. So, the vote in the amendment that you took on the NCPRD order, accepting the process going forward, is then sort of endorsing the adoption of the order that is now before you, that is the subject of the motion.
Okay.
I love attorneys.
I moved it. Was there a second?
I did.
There's a motion and a second further discussion? All right, Mary, we're ready for the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. So, the next, Mr. Crupp, public hearing.
Well, actually, Chair, if I may, and with the assistance of Mr. Crupp and staff, if you would just indulge me, just want to put the icing on the cake here, so to speak. So, I would like, similar to the motion I made yesterday, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to bring back a package in corresponding language that reflects the needs of the underserved communities for inclusion in the ballot summary. Is that consistent with your suggestion, but further directing staff to prepare that for inclusion? And I know we can't do that to actually have it ready for that, and it's not the time, but if staff doesn't prepare for that, we won't be ready to include it timely enough.
So, I think I got the... Just the motion. Mary, did you get the motion down?
No.
Okay, Mr. Savas, would you repeat it one more time? Just the motion, please.
Direct staff, I move to direct staff to bring back a package in corresponding language that reflects the needs of the underserved communities for inclusion in the ballot summary.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Savas, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Discussion. I would tell you that this is way premature, when Mr. Story has told us that we will not get to, if this process proceeds as on schedule, we won't get to that until August. Now, that's a long ways off, there's a lot of information that's going to come forward, a lot of better understanding, hopefully, about what is going forward, so I'd just say that it's premature, and I'll be voting against it. Any other discussion?
Yes, my question to Mr. Crupp, who seems to follow where I'm going, is there any inconsistency or problem with that?
I don't anticipate a problem. I don't know that a motion is necessarily needed, because we're going to be coming back to you, and you're going to have to be approving what will be language that goes on to the ballot. And as I understand the gist of the majority of this board, you're interested in having us address this specific concern and this issue when we come back to you with precisely that language. So, we've already, in my mind, already have direction to do that.
Well, let me state my rationale for doing this. There are a number of people in the unincorporated area that are upset, and I think that this will calm them down to know that there is a commitment by the board, all of us, our colleagues, that we plan on intending including that. Without that, if the vote goes the wrong way in August or July, that... And you will hear from them directly, so hopefully, when they come here, they'll be come here supportive, and they'll be able to communicate support in support of this. Absent that, absent a commitment from the five of us, that's what we mean, that we just voted on what we meant, what we said. Absent that, I think it's going to be problematic, because these people are working on their remonstrance of this issue.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just see this as getting it on the record, that when you pull together a package, hopefully, there'll be some specifics... Well, there will be some specifics there. I don't see this as particularly restrictive, I think it's just clarifying the direction.
Perhaps if I could clarify, perhaps, so the... We found out yesterday that there is a potential here for increased funding with the eighty-nine cent recommendation from the board. So, staff will immediately now go back and look at the capital plan that's been identified. This will make a dent in it. It certainly will not identify all, but I think for every area of the district, identify what would be those top priorities for every area of the district underserved, and have that in the proposal coming back, and be part of the feasibility analysis, it'll be part of the funding package.
And that's how you're perceiving this motion, Mr. Barth? I mean, you're kind of getting it, we're just kind of saying, yeah.
Correct, and I will say that will involve our citizen advisory groups, District Advisory Board, the city councils of Milwaukee and Happy Valley, who are sub-areas. When we formed the district, we formed the district with five sub-areas, and the only sub-area that's been added is Happy Valley, so we kind of have six sub-areas identified with needs, and so... And we've got projects identified for all of those in our big plan. So, now, I think it's staff to go look at the analysis, bring in and project how many dollars we're going to have to work with in this package, and come back to you with our professional recommendations, what we think the best practice would be to vet with the public.
Mr. Chair, call for the question.
All right, is there a second?
It has been seconded.
No, this is a call for the question.
Seconded, yes.
So, I will second it, so we'll have a vote on whether to stop debate and vote on this. So, I'll ask the clerk to take the poll, please.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
You know, I'm committed to... I'm going to make a comment, anyway. I'm committed to moving forward with the package. I just think that voting on every breath we take is a waste of time. I'm committed to move forward and getting the communities whatever they need, but I think that this process will be done during the normal process. There's no question it'll have to be if we want a new district, so I'm a no.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
Read the motion again, I want to figure out what we're doing. We're voting on... I move we approve the board order to initiate the formation of an ORS 266 Parks and Rec Service District.
No, you already voted on that.
We voted on that, so what are we voting on now?
The motion is...
Correction to staff.
This is an amendment by Mr. Motion...
Oh, okay, this is the one directing staff. Got it, sorry. It's...
Mary, you do have that in there?
I'm an aye, I know. All right, I'm fine.
And Chair Ludlow?
No, pass... Or fails three to. All right, now, given that we have passed everything, I think we're done with that, and ready for the second public hearing.
Ready for the next public hearing?
It should be noted that several of our Commissioners have to leave around the noon hour. It is now eleven thirty-nine AM.
Chair, point of order. It also should be noted that you didn't allow me an opportunity to vote.
What?
What?
That what?
Everyone got the vote except myself.
No, you were first.
No, I... That was first on the motion to call for the question.
I'm going to rescind, with my great power, the previous vote and ask Mary to do... Now, we're talking about the evidently, the amendment that Mr. Savas proposed.
Was it not an amendment, it was a motion. It was not an amendment, it was a motion.
I believe you're right. It was a motion that was seconded by Commissioner Schrader, and the vote was taken. Now, this is for that amendment, well, let's go ahead... Excuse me, that motion. Would you read the motion, not the amendment, again, please?
Okay. I don't have it verbatim.
I have it.
Why don't you read it, Mr. Savas?
And, Mr. Crupp, if you could just tell me if there's a problem with this. With my rationale, if you could tell me there's a problem, I'll read the motion again, word for word, but if you could express to my colleagues that if there's a problem with the rationale, thank you.
I don't appreciate Mr. Crupp being brought into this discussion. It's a motion, it's specific, we understand it, but, Mr. Crupp, you can comment as you wish.
So, I direct staff to bring back a package and language that reflects the needs of the underserved communities for inclusion in the ballot summary.
And we've already voted on the question on this, so Mary, please take the poll. No, we can't, we can't.
We don't have to vote on the question again?
This is a motion, and the question, we already took care of, we're not doing that again. Mary.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, I'm going to again comment that I think that that is what the process will be anyway, and it's just a waste of paperwork. So, no.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
No, fails three to two. Everybody get the vote? And now, the second public hearing, Mr. Crupp.
Okay, so the second public hearing is a consideration of a resolution for a supplemental budget to the Clackamas County budget that involves a change greater than ten percent. And in this particular case, I'll invite Diane Padilla to explain the proposal. As I understand it, the net effect of this will end up with a net reduction in allowable expenditures in the county budget. The primary elements of this particular proposal is to implement the budget reductions that were taken as a part of the health clinic budget reductions earlier this year. Am I correct with that, Diane?
Yes, that is correct. I'm here requesting approval of a resolution to... For a supplemental budget of greater than ten percent and budget reduction for Clackamas County for fiscal year 2013-14. The supplemental budget is a procedure Oregon budget law gives us to make larger changes to the funds. I should note that these three changes I'm asking about this morning were all reflected in the information that went before the Budget Committee last week, and the larger item, the reduction, was also a subject of study sessions. So, I'm just today asking for official approval to adjust the appropriation in keeping with a more accurate budget for the current fiscal year, 2013-14. There is a public notice required, and it was published in the Lake Oswego Review on June 5th. The first request included in this action is from the county school fund to recognize United States agriculture revenue, Secure Rules and Schools revenue, and budget it for distribution to the county schools. This was received in the second and most recent Secure Rules and Schools distribution, and we are passed through here. We will appropriate the $310,000 and then send it on to the Clackamas ESD for use by the county schools. The second item, it concerns the Tax Title and Land Fund. This was a fund that we closed and incorporated into the Property Resources Fund last year, but it seems there's fifty dollars left in the Tax Title Land Fund, so we need to appropriate the fifty dollars so that we can transfer it to the Property Resources and then close the fund again with a zero balance. And finally, the larger item is... Involves the Clackamas Health Centers Fund, which is reducing and realigning its budget due to lower than anticipated fee revenue from Oregon Health Plan Title 19 Medical Assistance Program and Medicaid RAP payments. And the reduction here would be $12,330,989. The total effect of this board order, then, would be a reduction in the overall county budget of $12,029,39. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have and to request approval of this supplemental budget.
All right, clarifying questions, Commissioners? All right, if not, I'll open the public hearing on this matter and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of the Commission.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the resolution approving a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than ten percent and budget reductions for fiscal year 2013 to 2014.
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll. Let the record show that Mr. Savas has stepped out temporarily.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. And now, what we've been waiting for, for so long, rather lengthy consent agenda, there'll be a duet today, I believe. So, who wants to start?
We're going to alternate back and forth.
I'll go ahead and start the consent agenda.
By title.
By title. Under Health Housing and Human Services, approval of an agency service contract with Alternative Services of Oregon, Inc. for behavioral consultation services and outpatient mental health services. Approval of two home loan agreements with E. Coy-Sow Terrace Renewal Limited Partnership. Approval of a change order number two with Housing and Community Development for the JWCLLC for the River Road Head Start Kitchen Remodel Project. Approval of a construction contract with Jim Smith, excavation for the Northwest Gladstone Infrastructure Improvement Project. Approval of an agreement with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon for the operation and capital for the Mount Hood Express Bus Service. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail, and Public Transit Division for operation of the Mount Hood Express Bus Service. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement Number 29498 with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Clackamas County Active Transportation Plan. Under Finance, approval of the fiscal year 2014-2015 Work and Financial Plan with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection for Services and Wildlife Services for Predator Management. A resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget less than ten percent for fiscal year 2013-2014. A resolution for Clackamas County for budgeting of new specific purpose revenue for fiscal year 2013-2014. A resolution for Clackamas County for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2013-2014. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas School District and Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for a school resource officer for 2013-2014. An approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Colton School District and Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for a school resource officer for 2013-2014. Community Corrections, approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement 4800 between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon Department of Corrections for the 2014-2015 Grant in Aid Funding. Approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement 4855 between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon Department of Corrections for the Measure 57 Supplemental Funds. Department of Emergency Management, approval of fiscal year 2011 State Homeland Security Grant Program Agreement between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon. And County Council, approval of amendments to the intergovernmental agreements with county-related entities and purposes for clarifying certain accounting practices. And Dawn, take it away.
Okay, so Mary can take a breath. So, for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, number one, a resolution approving the transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2013-2014. Number two, approval of an amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Damascus for the construction of Trillium Creek Park. Number three, approval of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Clackamas County for the purposes of clarifying certain accounting practices. Now, for the Development Agency, number one, a resolution declaring a public necessity and propose for acquisition of rights of way and easement for the Monterey Avenue Extension Project and authorizing negotiations and eminent domain action. Number two, approval of a cost recovery agreement with the United States Forest Service for an environmental assessment of the Ski Bowl Waterline Extension Project in Government Camp. Number three, approval of amendments to intergovernmental agreements between the Development Agency and Clackamas County for purposes of clarifying certain accounting practices. For Service District Number Five, Street Lighting, the first item is a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2013-2014 for Clackamas County Service District Number Five. Item Number Two, approval of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between Service District Number Five and Clackamas County for purposes of clarifying certain accounting practices. For Water Environment Services, item Number One, approval of an agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Stettler Supply Company for the Kellogg Creek WPCP Aeration Basin Improvement Project. Number Two, Amendment Number Four to the agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and the City of Johnson City for wholesale sanitary sewer services. Number Three, approval of amendments to the inter- number four to the agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and the City of Johnson City for wholesale sanitary sewer services. Number three, approval of amendments to the intergovernmental agreements between Clackamas County and Clackamas County Service District Number One, Tri-City Service District and Surface Water Management of Clackamas County for purposes of clarifying certain accounting practices. And then finally, for the Enhanced Law Enforcement District, approval of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the Enhanced Law Enforcement District and Clackamas County for purposes of clarifying certain accounting practices. And that's the end?
That is the end.
Well done. All right. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? Mary, do you have enough breath for the poll?
I do.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes five zero. Now, Tom, for the, excuse Martha Schrader. Now, Mr. Krupp.
I'll be very quick with these items. I just wanted to let you know that I have followed up from comments provided to you by two citizens from last week's meeting. Mr. Betty addressed the board last week regarding concerns about the county's management of code compliance issues and the amount of time it takes in order to resolve these issues. He had specific concerns about the fact that a particular matter had been in violation a number of times in the past. And so I wanted to let you know that I did contact Scott Caulfield with our Code Enforcement Group and asked to make sure that he notify Mr. Betty when we come back to the board for a work study session regarding the follow-up to the Code Enforcement Audit, so he's able to attend that. And then I also advised Mr. Caulfield that as a part of that, we'll want to address a concern I heard from commissioners about the situation where we have serial violations over time on a single property that get corrected, then go back into violation again a number of times. So he'll be prepared to address the board on that. Then you also heard from Mr. Len Kirshner regarding the notification requirements for timber harvest projects, and he was specifically referring to the Boulder matter, which you actually have scheduled for a study session next week. I talked with Rick Groen, and Rick has actually drafted a letter. At his suggestion, what we're going to do is simply follow up with the Forest Advisory Board to share his concern about notification requirements and get their advice and counsel as to whether or not there are any appropriate changes or approaches that might be considered to make sure that all parties are notified when there is a project proposed in their particular area. And so I'll be getting that letter out here before the end of the week.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Krupp. You know, I know the commission, and Les Poole's been here talking about before, how refreshing it is to actually have answers to people's questions as they bring them forward, week by week. And now it's time for commissioners' communications, and I'll recognize Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I don't want to interrupt Commissioner Smith, but I have to leave for a noon appointment. So I'm gonna dart out.
Well, she has to leave right away, too. I mean, I've said this before, ladies and gentlemen, this commission meets in a business setting at 10:00 a.m. on Thursdays and one evening a month on Thursday evening. It is important that attendance be maintained. It's only been two hours. We have a great deal of business. This agenda has been long for a long time. And now, Commissioner Smith, I will hope you can hang in there and be a little late, as Commissioner Bernard and I have comments, and I do have some public announcements as well. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I'm gonna read a statement into the record. I continue to support all diversity initiatives of Clackamas County, including diversity based on gender, ethnicity, and sexual orientation. As you all know, Mr. Jared Anderson made a complaint against me alleging that I discriminated against him based on his age, sexual orientation, or political affiliation. Whether this was politically motivated, we will never know, although I have my suspicions. What we do know is that I fully cooperated with the investigation of the complaint. And at the end of the investigation, the investigator concluded that Mr. Anderson's assertions were incorrect, that I did not harass or discriminate against him because of his age, because he was a Democrat, or because he was gay. Claims about my opinions with gay rights in the newspapers are incorrect. And let me just put on the record, my role seven years ago as a contract lobbyist for the Oregon Family Council, I was hired by 2,200 churches across Oregon to represent them on religious freedoms in employment statute. And that's exactly what it was. And since I represented churches to allow them to hire whom they wish to hire and not be dictated to by government is why I feel I am under assault in this. We amended the bill. The bill passed the legislature unanimously that year and was signed by a Democrat governor. Anyone can make a complaint against anyone about anything. All we need to do, we all need to fully participate in the complaint process so that we can ensure the county employees are treated with respect and consideration they deserve. From the very beginning, I have supported the release of all materials related to Jared Anderson's complaint and the investigator's report so that this could be an open process. And the investigator's report, and not the sensationalized excerpts printed in the Oregonian, are what the board and the citizens of Clackamas County need to consider going forward. Additionally, I continue to support our county employees, and I feel deeply, and I apologize for any splatter effect the complaint and additional comments have had on innocent employees and citizens here at Clackamas County. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
Oh, is it my turn?
Yeah, there's only three of us.
You know, I think today's discussions could have been a lot shorter had preparations been made to provide amendments to things ahead of time. I remember last week, an email went out, "If anybody had any issues with anything on the agenda, please submit it." I think that, you know, I agree with what Paul was suggesting. I just don't think the process is proper. And sitting up here, mistakes occur. It happens all across the country, all across the world, because you don't take the time to think through what you're doing. I think there was one occasion as a commission that we realized later that what we did was probably not the right way to do it. So, you know, I think that when we get the email from Mary, I think from Dawn, says if anybody has any issues, take the time and write up an amendment to an ordinance or something that we can discuss, rather than throw them out would be helpful. And you could have done that, too.
Yeah, you tell them.
You could have. But we didn't really have the discussion.
We didn't know we needed it.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know that we knew we needed it. But it would have been helpful to know that, and we could have worked all that out ahead of time. Because, you know, Paul's right. We need to make sure we address the shortfalls that have not been addressed over the last, well, since the formation of the district. But we've gotta, I think, respect the process, work on it, present it. We could have talked about it at the work session, and it could have made this a lot shorter day, and other folks could have remained here. I just want to say that, you know, I had an opportunity to work with Jared. I think he was a great guy and did an excellent job in the legislature. I wish him luck and success. We, I think Clackamas County is a powerhouse, and we should take advantage of it. And I had one experience with Jared and other staff on the composting facility. And we had that thing resolved in 15 minutes. I'm not kidding. Just sitting at the table and down and chatting, finding the right people to make it occur, and it occurred, and it was a, it was a simple solution. I think we have an outstanding staff here at the county. And, you know, I hope that should this kind of incident occur, that you all know that my door is open. And that before it gets too far down the line, I think it should be addressed. And the administrator, myself and staff, is always here to make sure that this doesn't get to the point it got to. And I think we could do a better job, all of us, by respecting or having the sensitivity to maybe know that other people think differently than us. And, you know, we certainly, as the commission, hear it all the time. I mean, I'm wearing the Tillicum Bridge pin. I've got you all, all pins that I'm sure you'll wear every day.
That's that Manzanita guy coming out in them.
Yeah. You know, that's the new bridge, Light Rail Bridge.
Oh, that's what they're calling it. I forgot. They call it Light Rail Bridge, but go ahead.
Anyway. So anyway, again, I want to thank the staff throughout the county for their continued support of the commission and the hard work they do provide. And I'm excited that I did get the certificate.
Oh, my.
Of election. And actually, I'll be sworn in in January, I believe. So even though I am sworn in for my past four years already. So thank you very much for your support. And let's try and put this behind us and make Clackamas County the great place it deserves to be.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Very briefly, because I know Tudy's got to leave. As I said, I have issued my apology. We must remember, I give an apology for alleged comments. We were all interviewed by a professional investigator. We were not under oath or not deposition. And if all the things that Mr. Anderson said were true about Tudy and John, he said some very disparaging things about staff. And so is that to be cast aside and only believe what you will about Tudy and Ludlow? I'm not so sure. But I must remember that it's alleged. And my full apology, like I say, is available on the Willamette Week site. Anybody who wants it can certainly have it. As far as apologizing, it is important to apologize and pay better attention to the sensitivities of others. But sometimes those sensitivities are clearly unknown. Nobody has come to me and said that they're offended by anything, but I know that's tough, since we're elected officials. The record shows that I've been nothing but supportive of this employee, Mr. Anderson specifically, and his department and his work, especially as Mr. Bernard has said, some outstanding work throughout the legislature. I wish Mr. Anderson the best on his sensitivities in life, and I certainly will increase mine. So that said, there are two public announcements I've got to get to, and then we can send people on their way. They are town hall meetings. The next town hall meeting will be September 10th. It's in Estacada. It's sponsored by the Estacada Chamber of Commerce. It'll be held at 475 Southeast Main Street, Estacada, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And lastly, next week, Thursday, June 19th, during the evening, Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, we'll be giving our annual state-of-the-county update to our citizens and partners. The presentation will focus on the county's accomplishments in 2013-2014, and it'll look forward to our goals for the next fiscal year beginning July 1st. We will have a video presentation, and I will deliver remarks. Please join us at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 19th, right here in the board hearing room, or certainly watch it on video, live streaming. So ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.